It's 6:33. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a roll call vote. Casey Barney?
Here.
Lee Sharps?
Here.
Tasha Singa?
Chivilingam?
Present.
Harold Lemos?
Here.
Fran Newton? Here. We start with pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm starting this meeting with a public hearing, and I would like to read the resolution and then open it up for comments. Whereas the town of Ashland had the 2017 town meeting voting session scheduled for March 14th, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Ashland Elementary School Gymnasium. On March 13th, 2017, our state was placed under a winter storm advisement as the nor'easter was approaching with the expectation of 12 to 18 inches of snow was to hit our region on March 14th, 2017, voting day. At approximately 10:00 a.m. on the 13th of March, our town moderator Glenn Dion, pursuant to RSA 40:4, made the decision to postpone voting until Thursday, March 16th, 2017, for the safety of the voters. The voting time and location did not change, and the town clerk provided proper notification to the residents of the town. After a properly noticed public hearing on this date, in accordance with the provisions of HB 329, which was passed into law on April 21st, 2017, we do hereby ratify the 2017 town meeting and all actions taken by the legislative body by vote of the people on March 16th, 2017. This resolution was adopted by the Board of Selectmen May 15th, 2017. So before we sign it, I'd like to know if there are any comments or concerns from the public. Any comments from the board?
I have one.
Yes?
I recognize that this is procedurally necessary. I encourage it, but I would like to state that my vote will likely reflect that municipalities should be free to make decisions for the safety of their residents, especially when there's RSAs that indicate that the elected officials have that vested power without the state unreasonably questioning their decisions, such as, in this case, the moderator delaying the voting for inclement weather. Thank you.
Then I hear a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second this motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution to certify the vote of March 16th, please say aye.
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 It's nay? Did you say nay?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Nay.
Four to one. The resolution is passed, so I will pass it around for signature. Public comments, agenda items only. Does anybody want to make a comment related to an item on the agenda? Okay, moving on. We have minutes from May 1st to approve. So comments? Yes, Lee?
Line number four, under Public Works in the LRTC Road Service.
Which, oh, page two.
Page two.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, page two.
Yeah.
It should say, spoke, cross out line, about the project, is the project for the whole town or specifically for a certain street?
It's the whole town, yes.
So it should say about the townwide project.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Line four.
Section, it's actually five. I think it's line four or five.
Line four and five, yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Spoke about the townwide project.
Okay.
Same page down at line 25, where it says, no opposition to that type of business. It should say, distillery business.
Right.
Type of business.
Yep, thank you, Lee.
On the next page, on line number nine, Katie, should be C-A-D-Y instead of C-A-T-Y.
Yep.
Which, oh, C-A-D-Y.
Yeah.
And on the last page, the last sentence where it said that I read an update from the planning board, I also read one from the Penny River Advisory Committee and one from the Fourth of July Committee.
Great, thank you. I have a few comments on page one, line 37.
Pre-lack and Fourth of July Committee.
Yep. Let me know when you're ready, Wendy.
Yes, pre-lack, right?
Yeah, pre-lack.
Pre-lack. Yeah, pre-lack and Fourth of July Committee.
Okay, down on page one, line 37, it said Barney sustained. I think it was abstained.
Oh, yeah. Both really.
And on the very next line, you said Lemos opposed, Casey and Chivilingam abstained. We should stick with last names. You used Barney before, you should use Barney again.
Yeah.
On page three, I forgot the Katie as well, line 16, it said liaison to Ashland Housing Standards Board. It should be, just say Ashland Housing Standards Board is the title. But then on line 18, Kendall Hughes has expressed interest in being a member, not a liaison. He would be a member of the board. And further on that line, the same thing, approve Mr. Hughes as a member of the Housing Standards Board. Down on line 34, Selectman Lemos brought up that the flag light needs to be installed, not removed. And it's not at Memorial Park, it's at the ball field.
Because there's nothing there now.
Right.
34?
Yeah.
Page three.
And then Director Peckett said he will look into it. We assume he'll take care of it, but we did ask him to look into it.
Hopefully before Memorial Day.
Hopefully before Memorial Day. Anybody else have comments?
Yes, I have one, only one.
All right.
Page four, line 37, it begins in, I'm sorry, it begins in line six, it says, the engineer said he would review the plan for $100 an hour and offer public conservation. It should be conversation.
Yes.
Auto correct.
On the issue for approximately $650.
Okay.
That's inexpensive for that. That's all.
I have a couple.
Okay.
It's the page four, conversation.
Page, oh, wait.
Line seven.
I did correct that.
You guys like the new format?
Yeah, I do. It's much easier to deal with.
Page two, line 16, at the end here, Chairman Newton stated that this is a follow-up on or from prior board discussions. I have both on my draft here, so.
There's a line through on, yeah, so just get rid of the on.
And then on that same page, on line 27, I would propose that it say, all in favor. So Lemos seconded, period, all in favor.
Yep.
Okay, on page three, line 13, Selectman Chivilingam motioned to request a special election to fill the seat in District Nine. Because we don't fill the seat, we just request for that. And then, okay, line 42, upon finding necessary funds in the budget. That's it.
Casey, do you have anything?
No.
In that case, then I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. So now we have our consent agenda. We have the manifest, the general fund manifest is $128,648 for signature, and the payroll manifest, $13,072. I will sign those and pass them along. The NHDOT Transportation Alternative Program, or TAP, Local Project Agreement, I did sign that, and we returned it to NHDOT so that we can take the next steps toward getting our sidewalk project underway. And then, New Hampshire Department of Revenue, MS 232 form, report of appropriations voted, we did sign that in the office as well. That's it. Okay, department heads. First, we have Ann Barney.
I hear about the stove that's no longer there. When they, the common man came and took it out for us, they helped.
Yes.
And when they were there, they noticed the hood that's above it.
Yep.
That we no longer need, and they were asking about that. And after talking to them, they are willing to come and take that out, and in return, they will purchase a stove for us, anyone I pick out, and like, we're going to need a small hood, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
After talking to Steve, he told me we only need a regular.
Right.
So they are willing to come and take that out and give us a brand-new stove that I pick out and hood that we need and make it.
Nice.
All good for us.
That's fantastic.
So I just wanted to get it okay.
Any comments from the board?
Sounds good.
Does that include any repairs to the facility as far as the hole that will be left from the old hood?
They will, they will make it, they said they're willing to do whatever I need to do.
Okay.
I haven't got specifics, because I told them I had to come and get it okay, but they said that they would do that, yes.
My only other question was, last time you spoke, that they removed the lines for the, I mean, the tanks for propane.
Yes.
Have they removed the lines since? Are those gone as well? That was my only other question.
There is a line that goes through the wall, but it's not hooked up to anything.
Okay.
They didn't take that out, but Eastern Propane took that out. It's like a shut-off thing that's there, but it's not hooked up to anything.
Yes.
Thank you. I would usually ask to table this, because I did not receive, again, information on this item before the meeting. However, I am very impressed that you've been able to find someone that is willing to donate or purchase for the town a stove. So I would like to therefore move that we approve the acceptance of the stove that will be purchased by the common man.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the stove from the common man and the new hood, please say aye.
Aye.
And again, I would request a thank you note from the town for their generosity. This is wonderful. We love, we love community partners. Thank you, Ann, so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve Heath.
Hey, just something to stop. I update you on the status of purchase of new apparatus. The committee has made a decision as far as which vendor we want to go with. We're in process of negotiating, you know, price and so forth. We've met, you know, last week, we met extensively with the dealer that we decided to go with, and we're awaiting a final quote from him. He was the only vendor that was below, you know, that he had the lowest bid, and we're not necessarily going with the lowest bid, but also there are other factors that drew us to this vendor, too. And for example, one of, one of the items was the, that it's sort of local, it's within state, the dealer is, and the type, he's the only vendor, too, that is manufacturing the type of body that we're interested in, which is a bolted body, which is less expensive upfront than a welded body. And also, down the road, it is a little less expensive to repair in that if a truck needed to go out for repair of the body, it would have to go back to the factory and would be out of service for that amount of time. And that can, you know, just our experiences with the latter have shown us that, that, you know, driving it all the way down to North Haven, Connecticut, so forth and back, it takes manpower and it takes time. However, with this bolted body, they would simply re-manufacture the part of the panel, ship it, and the local dealer would come over and install that. And we're talking to the people in Rochester and Tufton Borough in regard to their experiences with this type of body, who actually went and visited those departments and looked at the trucks they had that were bolted body, and they came back very positive. So, you know, we're very comfortable with this. We think down the road, it's going to translate into less downtime for a truck should it need repair. The bodies, the warranty information on all of these were pretty much the same across the board.
Okay.
They all met our, you know, our specs. But we're really interested in this bolted body. We think that that's going to be a little positive way to go.
How long is it going to take them to build it, Steve?
This manufacturer was anywhere from 340 to 360, and it ranged all the way up to one manufacturer that was talking 500 or more.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's no surprise.
We're interested in moving along, because the sooner we actually place an order, you know, we get in line, so to speak. You know, we haven't got a place in line yet because we haven't committed to it.
Okay.
But the sooner we do that, the better.
What is the final purchase price of the engine?
Well, I don't have that.
Oh, you don't have that? Okay.
But it is, it is well, at this point, it's low.
But it's lower than, lower than the warrant article allowed?
Oh, good.
That's excellent news, excellent.
To surmise this, so it's under budget. It's less wear and tear to drive it to and from for repairs. Less fuel, less man behind the wheel. Our mechanic can repair it, and it's a local company.
Yeah, yeah, local. It's Eastern Fire Apprast, which is based in Milton, okay? And they, most repairs, they would be able to make right in our station. He also offered a service contract, or said he could come over and do regular service, too. And he said anything that he needed, that he couldn't do in the station, he has a shop in Milton that it can be done in, but we don't anticipate the truck would have to go back to the manufacturer for the repairs.
So for your service, you were paying two men to drive four and a half hours one way to Connecticut?
Mm-hmm.
And that'll nix that, okay?
Wonderful. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Tasha Singa?
Chief, I'm always impressed to hear you speak. You know, you're very on the ball, so to speak, so thank you. And I would have loved to have received a memo prior to this, just to have a summary of what you just verbally, you know, relayed to us, but this was passed by warrant article, right? And you're asking that we just approve the purchase, so I'd like to motion that the purchase be approved as proposed by the chief.
Do I have a second?
I will second that on the grounds that we have a final number before we sign any pieces of paper.
Well, we will, obviously.
Yeah, we would have to do that.
Yeah, we don't sign anything without a number.
I just need, you know, authorization to go ahead and talk to the finance people and get, crunch the numbers and do a final run-through of everything.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of giving the go-ahead to Chief Heath to start the process of buying this engine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, Steve, thank you so much. It's really good news. And we hope it's the lower end of the days. Okay, old business.
That's me.
We have a project list. You know old business, Charlie.
Yeah. I've got some old business here. So I'll speak to what I highlighted in yellow. Any comments or questions, feel free to ask. As you mentioned earlier, we received the TAP grant authorization from NHDOT that was signed off by the governor. I actually became LPA certified for this project.
Wonderful.
I have to take another training for labor compliance, probably in the spring, as they recommend before the construction begins. Doesn't look like this might not go to construction until 2018.
Probably not.
Could, but with that being said, we're well on our way, because the letter was returned on Sunday. So now all we need to wait till they, A, receive that, and then we'll schedule a meeting with them, their project manager about the next process, and probably putting out an RFQ, then an RFP, and.
For engineering.
Design and all that stuff, so.
Excellent, thank you, Charlie.
The Thompson Street Road Reconstruction Project, I put a note here that that warrant article failed, and under RSA 32:10IE, that's the no means no provision, I don't know where the board is going to want to go with this project. Clearly, the town said no, so clearly this project needs to be reconsidered to find a better way for approval.
Yeah, and we need to know what the limitations of that is. I mean, obviously, no doesn't mean we can't repair the road or, you know, make minor adjustments, but it sounds like it's no for any kind of reconstruction at this point, so.
Big, big reconstruction.
Yeah, so obviously, we're going to have to think about next year and resubmitting this warrant article, so. Any other comments?
Also, we mentioned at the last board meeting that maybe that would be discussed first with ATAC?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. But again, this is good guidance for anybody, because we can't just go ahead and come up with a new plan for doing part of it, which we had sort of discussed, as nice as that would be, so. Okay.
GIF mapping, we received the data. It's not ready to go to the website. I can speak more to that with the board at a later date. I added the Board of Selectmen goals set in session with Primex to this list. Can, do we, I can't remember, did we tell the public about that? I can shortly.
I think you mentioned it at the last meeting, but you want to talk about it again.
Yeah, we, so I reached out to Primex. Primex is our liability carrier, and we are going to have a sit-down session with the Board of Selectmen and the department heads to sort of have a brainstorm as to what the goals and objectives of this board are over the next three to five years. Part of that process, we will do a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, opportunities, threats that, you know, might be facing the town to come create a goals and objectives going forward. With that being said, Primex had a date of June 7th at 9:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m., excuse me?
Please.
9:00 a.m.? Does that work for the board?
It does for me. What day is that?
I believe it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Looks right, okay. Lee? I know you, but you have the form that you can fill out and pass in.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. No other updates, the Riverwalk maintenance. We had a site visit walkthrough with me, DPW Director Harold, and a member of the Lord of Pop Trustees, not planning board chair. DPW is going to remove some overgrowth and might spread some mulch or wood chips.
Can we back up a little bit before?
Sure.
Do you know what the next steps are in the Brownfields grant? I know that Novus was preparing a budget for DES. Do you know where that is?
I don't.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything.
All right, thank you.
Want to send them an email?
Yeah, I'm just curious when that's going to start.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Sure.
Also, when this last came up, I believe, we talked briefly about the possibility of PSU students being involved. Did you have an opportunity to follow up on that and see if that's not?
I did, and I have not heard back from PSU.
Okay.
They offered to come to sit-down meeting with the board about what ways they could possibly help, and I haven't heard back.
When is their graduation? I mean, it may be.
It's like in two weeks.
The timing is probably off anyway, unless we have some students, so, yeah.
They'll be out in two weeks.
Yeah, they will be.
Yeah, that could be why.
Can we take and just make a note to follow up with that in the fall?
Yeah, there's any more work to be done, absolutely.
Okay. Install fire alarm system. We have Steve from Mango Security here tonight, who we present shortly. And of course, the stove at the Booster Club, we just got that approved. They billed an inspector, signed the contract, that's placed on file.
Great.
Litrogen planning commission, we approved that agreement at the last meeting. They said that they're going to start later in the year. The Whipple House.
So they're going to start both of them later in the year? That this is Culvert and Paven Plan?
One starts in, the Culvert's in May.
The Culvert's in May, okay.
Late summer, I believe, is the start of the Paven.
Okay.
The Whipple House, that was approved for the repairs last week. David has another thing on the item for today's agenda.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
The only other thing that I would ask, are there any on here that the board wants to remove? Because there's a lot of stuff.
Well, I think ones that are completed, you can archive. You know, like the Booster Club stove, and you can archive that.
Sure.
We'd certainly want to keep that in our end-of-year summary when we do our report, but we don't need to keep looking at it if they're completed.
But we should leave ones on.
We should leave ones that are still open.
Green, green, solar energy, utility partners, just move on.
Absolutely. Just as a reminder that these are still issues. All right, thank you, Charlie.
Sure.
On to old business. Last week, or last meeting, we voted pending budget to approve of the volunteer appreciation certificates. I would like to revisit that, because I've been thinking about it, and I'm very concerned, first of all, going back five years, you're never going to get anybody, and I'm afraid that it's going to be worse to overlook somebody than to give it to the majority of people. And I also know of people who are out there working all the time who really don't want recognition. Not only that, I think the, it's going to be very cumbersome, and logistics of giving them out should be, would be very complicated. Now, I'm all in favor of recognizing our volunteers. It's been one of my things I've been preaching ever, as long as I've been on this board. And I think we need to come up with a better way to acknowledge all of the work, the hard work, whether it's a day or a lifetime of contributions, not just for five years, but to the growth and development of this town. So I would like to make a motion that we do not give out individual certificates, but discuss a way to appreciate our volunteers in general.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you have any other proposals of how to recognize?
No, not at this point, I don't, but I think that we can discuss that. Maybe you can put that on the project list, Charlie, because this is something I've wanted to do. And as I mentioned two weeks ago, we did commit to having a volunteer day in honor of Norm DeWolf on July 20th, which was.
July 30th.
July 30th, thank you, which was their anniversary. So we should aim for that date and come up with some suitable way to let everybody know how much we appreciate them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One last thing. I'm not inclined to overturn our last, you know, vote on this, because I don't hear another proposal to take its place. So I'm concerned that without another proposal to take its place, that it kind of might just fall to the wayside.
Any other comments?
Well, there's, there's other problems with the whole suggestion. In fact, who's going to be doing all the work?
I know.
Looking back for the five years, plus you're just going to, I mean, you know, I love JD printing, but are we just going to give to one person without going out to bid?
Right.
There's other problems with it, I think.
My understanding is that it's less than $200, but I think, I mean, we could put it up to bid if that's the concern.
No, I have no concern about that whatsoever.
That's not the concern, it's just one of the.
I, I just think that it, it's a great idea in principle, but in application, I think it's fraught with problems, and I think we should just come up with a better way, whether it be a big banner or something. And I don't feel at all uncomfortable, because I'm committed to our volunteers. We're going to put it on our project list, that we will come up with something to replace it. But I think that this one is just not a good idea. So I have, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of. All right, all those in favor of eliminating the certificates and coming up with a new way to honor our volunteers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Harold?
Extinction.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, any other old business? In that case, new business, Ashland 150th.
Yay.
We're happy to hear from you, Jane.
For those who don't know, I'm Jane Sawyer, this is Bob Biggs.
Hi, Bob.
I'm the chair of the 150th and he's the money man.
All right.
What I did in your packet, I kind of gave you the first sheet was the basic outline of what we're supposed to do for that one big memory event. So first of all, if anyone had any questions or comments, I'd be able to find it.
Yeah, it's good, it's good. Thank you.
Good one.
Thanks.
Bill was nice, too.
Thanks. So do you have any questions just on the initial plan of events?
No.
No, it sounds good.
My only question is number five. Have you looked into DOT permits because three-quarters of our roads downtown are owned by the state and not owned by the town?
Right, it would be where they always, downtown when I was growing up, they had them on Pleasant Street, which is back past where a couple of farms in front of the Whipple House.
Yeah.
It would be in that area.
Okay.
And, you know, that's another step for what I need with Tony and that.
Thank you.
So then, the next page, I kind of broke down where we are. As you saw, we have finally gotten state approval on our license plate design.
Wonderful.
So I need the board's approval and then there's a letter I, proposed letter I attached that they, the state gave me, that they need to come from the board and request. We've approved it, we want your final approval.
Okay. Let me read that for the public. Ms. Byleck, is that her name?
That's right.
Okay, she's with the Division of Motor Vehicles Department of Safety. Dear Ms. Byleck, attached heretofore are the final designs for a license plate to celebrate Ashland's upcoming 150th anniversary in 2018, which has been approved by Alan Burgess Supervisor Two in the Prison Industries. The board respects, respectfully requests approval of such designs by you on behalf of the state. Thank you for your consideration in this regard, Town of Ashland, Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion to approve this letter?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
Yes?
So, I think that's a cool idea. My one reservation is that it looks like it would be produced by inmates in prison.
That's typical, I believe, for a license plate.
It's a DM, in order to have the plate, it has to be issued through the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Sure, yeah. I'm just expressing my, my personal, you know, reservations around that because I have, I actually worked for a law firm, I was an intern, and I saw some of the work conditions that some of those people experienced, so I have reservations about that. That's, you know-
As to the environment that they work in?
As to potentially the environment that they, that they work in, yes. That's all.
Any other comments?
Will you send this letter?
Either way, I didn't know if you wanted to generate it or if it's okay if it's on our letterhead and-
Yeah.
Okay.
It works for you.
And I'll just get the final, get one to you, one of the board's side?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor of approving the letter to request the license plate, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Go ahead, Jane.
Do you have a, about the plate, this is very interesting, have other towns been approved?
Oh, yes. In fact, that's one of the projects I did, there's been like, I don't know, I think there were 12 different plates that I've looked at just in the last five years to get an idea of how to do it. Yeah, to start with.
Will you guys pick up, like, a final design?
Yes, yeah, and you keep sending it to the prison industries, to Alan Burgess, he has to keep approving the color and whether the design's big enough to be read and that type of thing.
And this is only for one year, right? The plate's-
Right, it'd be for that one year and it can only be on the front plate.
On the front?
Yeah, so this doesn't replace your license plate number?
On the front it will.
On the, on the front it will?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, for that one year.
Okay.
And that was the other thing is, we will have to put a purchase order in. Depending on when we want to start selling them, the best idea is to start selling them in December, January, so people can have them on their car for the whole year.
Do you know how much they're gonna cost?
Right, he said there'll be, they're $20 apiece and we'll need to put in a purchase order in July.
Of this year?
And I didn't know, right, so that they can be, that's $20 if we get 100, which is the minimum.
Yeah.
Now, my question was too, is that something we can get through the $5,000 that we got through the warrant article this year?
You mean to-
The purchase order for those.
I don't think there's any restrictions on how that money was spent.
Because it is for the 150th.
Yeah, I mean, and that will be somewhat reimbursed, we hope all reimbursed by-
Exactly, right, because we can set the price that we want to sell them for.
Yeah, and I, I don't see any restrictions in that approval of that money. Do you, Charlie?
No, I don't know.
I don't remember offhand, how'd you write the article?
Just $5,000 for the 150th celebration, which this is part of the whole.
Yeah.
So how does that work when I, do I go to Charlie with the request or how do you do the, okay, so I'll work with you?
Yeah, me or Wendy.
Okay, all right, perfect. Now, the other question I had too is how are we gonna handle them being sold? Do you want to sell them through the town office and we can work on setting up prices? Is that the easiest way? Because that would probably be the most central location.
Probably would be. People coming there to buy them, get their-
And I figured I could have a little sheet of what the restrictions are. They can only be on for one year, they can only be on the front plate, that type of thing.
Okay.
Perhaps you have a meeting with the clerk?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And it can be sold to out-of-town people.
Oh, okay.
They don't have to be Ashland residents, that's an Iowa's-
Oh, okay.
Ah, very nice.
Yeah, no, because there's some people that have Florida plates that come back here for the summer and they were concerned. But I did check and they said anyone can buy them.
Okay.
It's controlled by their state. If they go to Florida and they're not supposed to have it on, that's their problem down there.
You only need one plate in Florida, though.
Okay, so that's, so it doesn't matter. So they'll be all set.
Okay.
Some towns, some towns put titles on there too, like Town Administrator.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Mayor?
Select, select.
Now, the other question is on the funds when they come in when they're sold. Does that then go into a 150th fund?
Yeah, it would have to go into that fund, that line, yeah.
You'd want to talk to the treasurer.
Yeah, definitely.
Is that still Linda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I still have it.
All right. Next thing I was requesting was the pool of the logo that was also attached. This is the logo slash branding that we'll use for, hoping to get things like t-shirts, coffee mugs, keychains, whatever, anything like that.
Yeah.
I am trying as much as possible to use, so far, I'm focusing on using either New Hampshire companies or at least USA-made companies.
Good.
Preferably mostly New Hampshire companies.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve this logo?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
So how is this, is this going to be purchased, the logos, that can be purchased out of the money that was approved through the warrant article?
We already, we already own the logo.
Oh, you already own it?
Yeah, the artist lady that I was working with has given us full consent and ownership of the, of the logo itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the Susque, Susquecentennial logo, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, my next question was on banners, for the poles, because now that we have the logo and the color that we're gonna be using, we'd like to explore getting some banners to replace the ones that we have. Again, probably just to have them up for that one year.
Yep.
And thought being any town, any company that sponsored one that didn't want it back, that maybe we would raffle them off and any money made on auctioning or raffling them would go back into the 150th fund or towards the town for whatever we needed.
Yeah.
So would you be speaking of replacing the wreath ones or the covered bridge ones or the American flag ones?
Probably the covered bridge ones. Or maybe even the flag ones too, depending on how many we could-
The flag ones were sponsored by individuals, so maybe the covered bridge ones would be the better ones to replace.
That's a good idea.
So we, you know, we don't want to eliminate any of our sponsors.
Historically, the covered bridge ones are the oldest ones as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pardon me.
Go ahead.
So you're replacing banners? Is that what you're-
Right, well, it won't be till next year. I mean, I want to-
Right.
Get some made and get them sponsored and, again, to do as a fundraiser.
Okay.
Give corporate sponsors to me.
And the funds to purchase those new banners would come from?
From individuals who sponsor them, that's how we got the, the flag ones.
Not an upfront cost?
I'm hoping not, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have a certain number that will agree to purchase and then I can exactly.
Our town has always come forward, very fruitful with this sponsorship of projects in this town.
Who?
The town has been very-
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we had great success with the, with the flag ones.
And you know who, where they got the ones they have now?
I believe those were JD Design.
Okay.
But I would, would suggest that you make sure you have a competitive bid, just, just to be, you know, transparent.
Right, I know, expect and just replace theirs because they're doing their 250.
Yeah.
And I think they, I looked at their minutes and I wrote down the name of the company they used, so I was thinking the same thing, so I'll press it out.
Yeah, get a competitive bid, but I know she did the ones that are up.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It would be helpful if you would document that competitive bid, just so we know who, you know, who went out to bid.
Oh, definitely. Yep, definitely. And then I assume, do I go back to Tim Parkett when it comes to the point of wanting to install them after the first of the year and that type of thing? Is he the-
Tim?
Yes.
If they get new banners for the Susquecentennial, would she come to you to get them installed?
Yes.
Okay, that's the answer to your question, Jane. Thank you, Tim.
Predominantly, are all those mostly up by the lake, covered bridge banners?
They seem to be scattered. I mean, we got so many flags, I mean, which was wonderful, but I, I've seen the covered bridges scattered. So if we have to, you know, if Meredith Village Savings Bank sponsors one, we can take their flag down and put this one up.
Oh, okay.
So just as long as we're not taking anybody down that's not replacing the same person.
Okay.
Because hopefully, you'll get more than the covered bridge.
Right.
So I think that would be a fair way to replace the flag ones for that year.
That's a good idea. I could even ask anyone like Meredith Village, you know, are you okay if we do?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, I think Meredith Village, drive-through town, they have close to a dozen.
Yeah.
Mr. Hiltz has 16. I think there's about a-
Yeah, it's good for the businesses, so I'm sure they'll be happy to-
I would definitely speak to Mr. Parkett as far as retaining the old ones because this is only a, what, a month-long project or are you gonna have them for a year?
No, it's the whole year, for the whole year.
Right, but I mean, after that year, yeah. Why incur any further costs if you don't have to? They just disappear.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd also like to recommend that wherever possible, perhaps you could find people who would like to donate their time and resources because sometimes the businesses can have that be a tax-deductible thing. I don't know the specifics about that, so I can't, you know, for certain.
As far as the banners or any other?
Any, any of the items, right?
Right.
Just a thought to explore.
No, definitely. One of the things I'm doing is there's a lot of former, all summer existing, but a lot of former people I know that have businesses out of town that, like, I know there's that one family that has a company in Littleton that makes t-shirts, that does the logo t-shirts. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact a lot of those kind of people.
Yeah.
And exactly, request that whenever I can.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. On the $5,000 warrant article, one of the items that I was told was I should request that the selectmen indicate that these funds will be in a non-lapsing account?
Ah, yes, it's a good idea.
So-
Yes, probably should make a motion on that, that the $5,000 for the 150th be put into a non-lapsing account. Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, any question?
Yes.
This isn't gonna be modifying the warrant article.
No, absolutely not. The warrant article was for a fixed amount of money. This just ensures that it doesn't go away by the end of this year because the expenses will continue into next year. So that's the reason for a non-lapsing fund.
Which is something I hadn't thought of.
No, I hadn't either and I'm glad you brought it up. Because we wouldn't like the money to go away. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of putting this $5,000 into a non-lapsing fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Charlie, can you handle that? Thank you.
One of the items that we have been talking about was thinking of something for a long-term monument. One of the things, we were down in Concord overnight for a concert and we're walking along the Main Street in Concord, I don't know if any of you have seen, where they took a bell and the old clock and encased it.
Yeah, looks really nice.
It's incredible.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
So I got thinking about, we have the bell that the LW Packard Mill has. I was wondering if we could explore the possibility of looking at putting some type of, not as huge as Concord, they had to make it tall because they had a clock, but ours would just be a bell, so it wouldn't have to be as tall. Of making some kind of brick enclosure there for this bell on the small park where the trough is now?
That's state-owned property.
Why isn't town trough there?
Well, that, that whole property, it, it's state-owned, but, um, we're looking at, uh, it's very complicated because the people who are, who bought that building.
Right.
Uh, the Adamskis, you know, presented a plan to the planning board, which included a handicap ramp off to the side. And they were trying to get our approval for a variance and for an easement to put it in. And it turns out, after we explored who owned that property, that it got turned over to the state years ago when they put in, um, that thirty-two, I mean, yeah, twenty-five Route Three. And it has always been an assumption that it was town property, but we have no paperwork that shows it is.
Okay.
So they're working that out. They're not putting up the handicap ramp for the, the time being, but still trying to work it out. Um, but it's, had been considered a part of Memorial Park for a very long time.
That's why I just assumed it would be a purpose.
So, you know, in terms of its location, I think we have to kind of leave that one open until that whole thing is resolved.
Okay.
I think the only concern, even if it was our, our land, is just, um, to have a surveyor, I'm sure we have a couple in town that could go out and give you a line of sight assessment, because I know that when that building was taken down in nineteen sixty-three, one of the reasons stated in that report was line of sight. It was a, I believe it was a restaurant that was taken down.
Right, right.
And it was, line of sight was one of the main issues. They widened the road there and altered the intersection. So that, we don't want that same problem reoccurring with something like a brick and mortar, you know, structure.
Which would not be as far out. I mean, it's being more back where the trough is, and I figured the trough could be moved to the Flag Island or one of those places or something.
Yes.
Because again, the trough, nobody really sees either when I say something to me.
True. I didn't even realize it was there to be perfectly honest, though. Yes, Teja Singh.
So I have a concern about the cost.
Yeah.
You know, it seems like a, a project. So what are your thoughts? Have you looked into the cost?
I haven't, because I wasn't even sure if it was even something that, you know, anybody would even think was a thought that we should do.
Well, I don't think it hurts to get the information.
Yeah.
I personally think it's a great idea to have something permanent to go forward. You know, I don't want hundred and fiftieth just to look backward.
Right, right.
And it's nice to have something to carry us forward, so I think it, it's definitely worth exploring.
I mean, my thought would be, it would be a separate fundraising type item.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, maybe, um, you know, let's say, if you wanna buy a brick, I mean, things like that. I mean, that's, that's kind of what happened with the Whipple House and the railroad station.
Right, right.
Sell bricks or boardwalks or whatever.
Yeah, well, look into the possibilities and come back to us when you have some.
So I'll explore more of our costs back in the day on that. And maybe a different location, too.
Yeah, a location is obviously consideration.
I don't know if you can notice there's someone who's.
Yeah, but it's not time for public comments, so.
Okay. I also, in consideration, to note that the River Walk is also town property. It's a very much overlooked piece of property in town. It's very close to L.W. Packard Mill.
Now, what do you think? Would there be a spot there, do you think?
Well, there's a lot of vegetation being removed right now. It'd be great to have something to put there.
You know, that's a great food.
That is a good idea.
Yeah.
Make it really something people wanna go look at, so.
Is it kind of obvious as to how far that goes down Mechanic Street?
Um, my understanding is the curving. My understanding is the end of the curving, and there's a delineation there where it says private parking.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, so my understanding, this is, uh, um, it, it's an exploration, but it's, we're not committing to necessarily whatever the final project is.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Yeah, I would definitely come back. I think that's just something I'm exploring as another option, like she said, that would be something we would leave as, as the one fifty.
Yeah.
Um, okay, most of the other events, um, I kind of listed them. We have, I'm gonna do a, some kind of secession reenactment, picking out the name. Um, and then we're gonna, we're working with the Hobo Railroad to, uh, to do a Civil War Ball at the Common Man, the common. And I work with the Hobo Railroad, so they would pick people up at the Ashland Train Station.
Oh, very cool.
And take them up.
Very cool, cool.
And stops right in front of the Common Man Inn and bring them back.
All right.
Um, and then Sunday, I'm looking at doing, and Monday will be cemetery walks, which are, I don't know if you're familiar with them, Bob, and I have done a couple in Hampton, where you have different characters that represent, um, different people that are in the cemetery and tell their story. Um, I've been looking at going through, I have three that are families that are still in town, and they're, they're descendants of them.
Mm-hmm.
And then I have, um, two, I have three that are, two of which were very active in the eighteen sixty to, uh, to, into the nineteen hundreds, very active in the town of Ashland, like opening the first bank and, and those kinds of things. Um, so they're really fascinating stories to tell. Um, and again, I'm gonna be working with, I have a list of, I'm still work, I've met with Steve Heath on all these things, but I still have to meet with Tony Randall and obviously the, uh, cemetery trustees and, um, all the different, and other individuals to get permission.
Yeah.
For those.
Yeah.
Um, then I have rain dates. Um, we have the street dance. Um, now, the street dance, I didn't know, is that something that, once I get further into it, that I'm gonna need to come back to the board for approval?
Probably, probably. I would, I would suggest, wouldn't you think so, Tony? Yeah, I, I think we need to have more details.
Need letters sent out to all the butters?
Oh, probably. That, that's the kind of thing we need to think through, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay. And then, uh, Friday is gonna be alumni day. I'm gonna be working, I want, I have a meeting set up with the school to come talk to them. I wanna use the gym, uh, for all the different classes, the alumni, um, to set up different booths.
Mm-hmm.
And then Saturday will be, uh, the parade, starting at two in the afternoon. Again, I have to sit down with Tony to work on the, getting permissions from the D.O.T. and how we're gonna do the road closure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my hope is it's big enough that we need to start over on Route Three to go into town.
Okay.
Um, so again, on that, I did bring, I think it was in a package, a proposed letter that I'm gonna send to the parade participants. And I'm not sure if you're gonna need to have your, uh, kind of try to look it over first before I send it out, or if it's.
It's probably a good idea.
That's what I was wondering.
No, I think it's a good idea to have them quickly review it, um, and, you know, give us a chance to review it as well.
I mean, I kinda use the basis that they had for the Fourth of July.
Okay.
And a little bit more like that. They give permission to have their picture taken and that sort of thing.
Okay, okay.
You never know with groups.
I know.
You know, nowadays, it's like.
I know.
I didn't know everybody used my Instagram.
Right.
So I, again, I haven't started doing the letters. I've gone through and come up with my list of, uh, possible parade participants, like Smokey the Bear and Sparky the Dog, and I have all these baton groups, and I've been going to all these different sites for all the different towns that have been having their, uh, celebrations and pulling all these groups off of there and getting their addresses and things. So I would like to try and get the letters out over the next month.
Okay, um, I think, would it take Charlie, you know, I don't, unless anybody else has any comments, I mean, make sure that it's okay with legal and we can either approve it at our next meeting or.
Okay.
Okay? And that's in two weeks? Yeah, yeah.
My only question would be if you have any type of, are you gonna include like an insurance, um, not waiver, but a liability waiver and perhaps an insurance binder for some of these vendors or performers?
Well, I assume that would be the next step when they agree to come, that we would then send the next stick, the next letter, which would be, thanks for coming, here's what we require. Do you have insurance?
Yeah.
I only mention this because it's going legal, so just to cover your, your committee.
No, it's a good point.
Well, how does that work with the Fourth of July parade?
Ask the Fourth of July committee. I really don't know.
This is a letter that they had used, so. I think because we're a town, I think because we're a town committee, for one thing, I think the parade itself, some of that liability is covered.
Mm-hmm, most likely.
My, my only concern was looking through your list would be, um, the parade of boats. A lot of those high-end, um, boats, if you don't have any type of, you know, waiver of.
Oh, the, the boat parade for, on, on next Sunday? Okay, I'm talking to the mariner about being in charge of that, that's her boat parade, that I'm not even.
Yeah.
Some of the houses, some of the boats are worth as much as houses, so you can actually have a liability.
Yeah, that was just a thought for him, for something, because I heard a lot of comments about trying to involve the beach and the covered bridge and the lake people.
Yeah, okay.
So that was one thing we're proposing later next year. Um, okay, then also, once that letter's approved, then I'll, I'll, I'll get you one for the different groups that we wanna use, um, at the ballpark.
Okay.
It'll be the same idea as if it wasn't a parade. I think that's good for now. I mean, they'll have fireworks, which I'm looking into. I don't really have enough information on that. And the one-fiftieth ceremony, I'm still kind of working that part out.
Okay. Yes, Teja Singh.
I just wanna say, it, it looks wonderful.
Oh, thank you.
It's really, uh, it's really neat to see these different, uh, you know, venues, and, uh, thank you for putting so much time and thought into this.
Thanks, thanks. I'm enjoying it. A lot of work, but I'm enjoying it.
That's great.
It's exciting, it's exciting for the time.
Well, we all look forward to the big events. All of them. Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it.
So, um, how, do you want me to like come back like every six weeks or so?
Sure, we'd love an update.
That'd be great.
We'd love an update.
Because I wanna really start advertising now that we have the logo approved.
Absolutely.
Get advertising out.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Whenever you need to be put on the agenda, just let me know.
Perfect.
Okay.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Do they know about the, the club you can sign up and join?
The one-hundred and five-hundred? Yeah, we need to get, we'll bring that information to the next one, our donation.
Okay.
We're trying to get a one-hundred and five-hundred club to get donations going among all the different alumni and things like that.
Okay.
Jane, you might wanna put a little story together for the newspaper, too, with the.
That's our start.
Yeah, definitely.
Now that I have the logo and we're in a spot, I can really start.
Yeah, we need good press.
Yeah, definitely.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Find my agenda again. Oh, no, that's your agenda. I got my, I need my agenda.
I know you have your own agenda.
I have my own agenda.
Mango security.
Okay, here it is. Yes, Mango Security. And I understand we have somebody come and speak to us.
Steve.
Steve?
Steve Mango?
Steve Mango? Who would've guessed? Okay, welcome, Steve.
One of the items that you don't have, um, this is a layout of the alarm system, as I've proposed it.
Okay.
Welcome to look this all over, so you can see the number of devices and where they are on the floors and, and that point, I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Um, Chief Heath, have you reviewed any of this?
I looked at those briefly this evening before the meeting started.
Do you, you probably need more time to study them?
I would probably, but I think what you need, I think mine, too, is if perhaps the board needs to decide exactly what the extent of the system is that they want.
Right.
This exceeds what would be required by code.
Okay, well, that's information we need.
I'm never gonna speak out against, you know, what.
No, of course not, of course not.
But I'm just saying that, you know, if, if, if this is, you know, you have to think about the use of the building, what the codes require.
Right.
And, uh, go from there, and what, what you're willing to, to, to do, to put in, and what, specifically the second floor, which you're gonna use.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a rather expensive, uh, proposition. And, and I thought we had originally discussed, uh, security as well as fire, yes? This has, does not include any security. It's just fire alarms.
This right now is just fire alarms.
Not even low temperature or anything?
Uh, nope.
Okay.
Nothing to do with anything else other than the fire alarm. And because there are specific codes governing what you connect to a fire alarm system, um, everything that we connect to this system would have to have something to do with fire protection type of things.
I see.
They have to be listed for the purpose or being used.
And this is a monitored system at the fire department?
Yes, uh, this proposes that we use a wireless, uh, proprietary mesh network for monitoring it, very same that we're using here in the school.
Mm-hmm.
As a matter of fact, the equipment is very similar to what's here in the school.
Mm-hmm.
It is a full detection system, 'cause my, the request I got was for, uh, something that would detect fire when the building was empty.
Mm-hmm.
What's required by code, actually, I don't believe there's anything required by code for that bu, building. It's a business occupancy, and there is not enough people who are normally in the building that require to have to have a fire alarm system. Uh, the first step you would have in building a fire alarm system is what would be called an manual system, which would have the pull boxes by the exit doors and notifications throughout the building. So an individual sees a fire, they pull a box on their way out, notify everybody else, and they call the fire department. This goes a step further where it puts smoke detection in the paths to egress, the ways out of the building, and then heat detection in all the other spaces except for the crawl space in the basement.
Mm-hmm. What do we have in the town hall now, Charlie? Do we have smoke detectors?
That's it.
That's it, okay, yes.
Battery-powered.
Battery-powered, okay, so they need, they should be hard light.
Chief has no way of knowing.
Right.
Listen to him.
Yeah.
Right, or somebody hears it, yeah, okay.
There's some calls.
No, I mean, I, that's why we decided to just look into this. Yes, Teja Singh?
Thank you. Uh, so how much would this cost if we brought it to just what the, um, the ordinance is required, you know, the guidelines?
It wouldn't cost you anything, 'cause I don't believe there's a requirement for a system in the building. So again, the next step up from that, when you go, if I wanna have a fire alarm system in a business occupancy, would be, again, a manual system, which would be just the pull stations, the control equipment, and, uh, it would not even have to be monitored. Again, the whole thing is about life safety and getting people out of the building.
Mm-hmm.
This was more of a system that's gonna offer a little bit more, uh, quicker notification in being remotely reported for building protection as well as life safety.
Chief, you have a comment?
All right, just a thought. It's, uh, motivated to start, uh, this idea of putting some sort of alarm or detection system in the town hall was that every other town building is monitored, okay? The bridge is monitored.
Mm-hmm.
So my question to the board some time ago was, would it not make sense to protect another pretty valuable asset that the town has? I mean, if I were to change about funding the town, if we were to lose not just the building, but the contents of the building.
Yeah.
Houses the police station.
Right.
It houses town records.
Right.
It's a pretty substantial piece.
Absolutely, and I think that's why we've been pursuing it for that very reason.
My intent originally was some sort of a detection system in there that was connected or monitored.
Yeah.
Okay, that would give us a better chance at getting to it in a timely manner and preventing a total loss.
Absolutely, yes.
And we never approached it from the angle that it was required by code.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this seems like a good item to put as a warrant article on next year's ballot. Has that been discussed?
Um, it hasn't been. We certainly can discuss it. I mean, it is a sizable amount of money. Uh, we, we do have it in our capital reserve, but it is a huge hit, um, much more than I was hoping for, frankly. And I, I think we need to think about options of either scaling this down or putting it in a warrant article. I hate to put it off, because I do think this is an important step. But, um, maybe we should, uh, take a look and see what else we can, can do to help ease the pain of the twenty-five thousand, so.
I think that we should look into any, um, Primex discounts for such a.
Yeah.
Fire detection device in this building.
Mm-hmm.
Also, think about that in our long-term plan, we'd like to increase the, um, amount of occupants we can have in that building if we do get to the point where ADA compliant. This would be a benefit to that.
Absolutely.
So those are the things we need to think down the road with utilizing the second floor more for meetings and not relying so much upon this room and other rooms within this building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also, I, you know, it's, it's twenty-five thousand fifty dollars. Um, but I would also like to remind the board that we do have a warrant article for expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars for modification of town-owned buildings or assets.
Yes, we do. And, and, that's what I said, we have it in the budget, but, uh, we have, might have other needs, too. I just think there's a lot of things that we need to consider before we sign off on this.
Yep, it is.
The need for it is unquestionable.
It's paramount, it really is.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, you know, I don't wanna delay this ad nauseam, but, um, I think we better look into all those issues. And as Harold mentioned, you know, talk to Primex and see what kind of a discount they might offer, yes.
One thought you might consider.
Yes.
To start with getting the, uh, manual system in.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna cost more to do it over time.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna be setting up and tearing down, setting up and tearing down.
Yeah.
But, uh, possibly you could do something like get the manual system in, and the way the system would be zoned, um, I mean, if you take a look at the drawing, like, doing everything that's on the basement drawing, so you get a smoke detector down by the entrances, sound barrier, pull station down there.
Mm-hmm.
On the main level, with pull stations at the exits, the front door, the police station, the side door, and the notifications throughout, so everybody is notified.
Yeah.
I did do a breakout by just taking off the top two floors, the second floor and the attic.
Okay.
And that reduced the cost by twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
That's good to know. Yeah.
Then we almost cut the, I mean, we have the devices, so.
Yeah, no, that was something that I had asked Charlie about, is their way to stage this.
Yeah, that you may wanna consider is doing something like that. I only, I only will caution you is that oftentimes we see this start, and it just kind of gets to work.
Right. Well, we had that experience at the Booster Club. It was started years ago, and we finally just finished it. And we don't wanna delay this, but, but we also need to get it started.
Right, if you wanted to come up with something in a staged type of manner where we did, uh, uh, the basement and then manual notification, that we sort of priced it up that way, then maybe a year later, you do the first floor, and a year later, you do the second floor.
Well, and as Teja Singh said, maybe we can put the rest of it into a warrant article if we, if we start the, the process now. So there are options that we can consider.
The good thing about right now, once this, all the hard work is done.
Yeah.
So if you say, twelve months from now, Steve, what, what do we look at with this? It takes me half an hour to just verify all the costs and make slight changes.
Yeah.
My experience is that it doesn't make major changes.
Yeah.
Year to year.
Yeah.
And the products that we're using here are products that have been really consistent over the last several years.
Okay.
It's been single-digit price changes, so it's not something that's gonna go, you know, crazy.
Yeah. Steve, any thoughts about staging it like that?
No, any, any way you can get there.
Okay.
As I say, at this point, the code doesn't require anything.
Mm, yeah.
My motivation was that all town buildings are, are protected.
Yeah.
By monitoring devices that alert us if there's a, a fire.
Okay.
Except town hall.
Yeah.
Um, I think it would be helpful to have a breakdown of that, you know, that kind of setup.
Yeah, definitely.
The basement, the manual system, the next floor.
Yep.
Now, the price breakdown that you mentioned, the twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the crawl space on the first floor, could that be designed and implemented in a way that could be used as the backbone for the second and third floor, so it wouldn't be redundant work being repeated?
Well, we wouldn't be doing redundant work specifically, 'cause I'd be working on different circuits. The way the circuits are set up right now, uh, on the first floor and second floor, I've got the, the manual stations on zones by themselves. The code states if you're gonna do this, you need to have the pull stations physically, the first devices on the circuit. And the ways they're located on the building, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to run wire back and forth and back and forth, so I just dedicate a zone to the pull stations, and then I can do the, uh, automatic protection in a more logical sequence, rather than zigzagging back and forth across the building. Makes it more cost-effective. Um, again, doing it that way, it's a six-zone panel, um, we basically have the basement, I've combined the pull stations and, and, you know, there's two devices down here. It's easy to put one first.
Hmm.
And, uh, the notification, if we do the notification throughout the building as well, uh, I mean, I'd be placing my raceways to get between floors and things of that nature. And one of the things I did want you to note on the drawings, if you notice on the second floor and on the attic, there are some straight lines that are drawn.
Mm-hmm.
Those indicate where metal raceway would be installed.
Okay.
In order to do that.
Okay.
Because there's no access behind, or like in the first floor, the suspended ceilings, everything would be up above the suspended ceilings. But on the other two, in the police side, there's suspended ceilings, but on the selectmen's side, it's all hard ceilings.
Okay.
And that's the most cost-effective way to do it. And that's the most cost-effective way to do it.
Okay. So if you could come up with a proposal or two for, for how to stage this so we get the process moving and still feel a little more comfortable with the budget, I think that'd be worth considering.
Yeah. And also, I was wondering what the board thinks in terms of having some like add-ons to the already existing smoke alarms for strobe signaling? Because I looked into that a little bit and it looks like we could just for a pretty reasonable price, just kind of include a strobe. There's some where like the strobe will just fix onto the, the smoke alarm.
Steve? I don't believe with the type of battery-operated smoke alarms you currently have that they offer that type of scenario. They do when you have the type of detectors that are powered by the building's power, which are called single-station smoke alarms. They do have interconnecting devices that you can do to add strobes and things of that nature too. But just the battery-operated devices, they don't make something that goes along with that. Primarily because they don't, the strobes really are what draw all the current, even if my fire alarm system is 90%, of the power being used is by the strobes that run the system. So they're kind of, don't lend themselves to the battery-operational devices.
Okay, all right.
But so I will put together for Charlie.
That's great.
A price breakdown, just doing the manual system first and then hit the main level and then the next two levels and stuff like that.
Excellent. Is that, that okay with everyone?
Yeah. Could you also include the, the price point that you mentioned for the $12,350 that was the crawl space in the first floor alone?
Sure, sure. So if we do basically the first two floors and don't do anything on the upper floors.
Because that's where our primary, our primary actions are, you know, the third floor is more of a storage at this time, so there would be less.
Well, the second floor does have the police station on.
Right, but I mean the top floor as far as that, you know, the pull stations up there, there's really no one ever there.
Right.
But there's historical.
Yes, there is, but I mean, as far as to pull the, to pull the pull station, if there's no one to pull it, then.
Oh, there are, right, right. The idea is, and this is, you have to understand the concept of firearm system, there are two ways out of the third floor. One is by a fire exit that's out the back and there's a pull station by that. If somebody leaves that and there's not a pull station, they're not going to notify anybody else in the building if it's fire.
You mean, they're not going to walk down three floors to say, hey, by the way?
And that's the whole, I mean, when you do things with firearms, if they're going to do something, we have to do it in a certain manner. Even though it's not a system that's required, when I install the system, it still has to meet codes for what I'm doing. So to that end, of a manual system, it requires manual stations at every exit and when you leave the floor. So you're at the stairwell so that the doors go.
Okay. Makes sense, yes.
One last thing, I was wondering, could you price out like the add-ons? For example, I saw heat detectors, like how much would heat detectors cost? How much would strobe, you know, strobes cost? Is there a way to kind of, you know, parse it out?
If I gave you an à la carte per device, it would cost you 30% more.
A lot more, yeah.
Because I don't know how you're going to choose it. I have to hedge my bets on what my labor is going to be installed.
Sure. Well, here's what I, what I was thinking about that is if we, say we were discussing the, the $13,000 option, but there was something else that we wanted to kind of add à la carte to that, which might increase it, it might be helpful for us in terms of discussing that to know how it broke out.
Well, one of the things I could possibly do is tell you what the cost of a smoke detector is as opposed to what the cost of a heat detector is. The installation of them are the same because they both mount to the same hardware, they both have the same wiring, and it could be something where instead of having detectors in some of these spaces that are not otherwise precluded because of their environmental conditions, you could put a smoke detector in there, which is going to give you much quicker notification. With regards to fire detection, smoke detectors pick up on the second stage of a fire and heat detectors pick up on the fourth and final stage of a fire when it's already growing exponentially. So I, one of the reasons why we, I set it up this way again was to try to conserve money where we can. And if we're running these smoke detectors, I mean, the way out of the building is what the smoke detectors are there for us for right now. But if you want us to move it up to almost a full smoke detection system, I can say, well, a smoke detector, you can replace the smoke detector, heat detector with a smoke detector for X amount of dollars, which is, again, is just taking one device out and putting another device in. The installation and everything else is the same, it's just giving better, quicker detection. Except for we wouldn't really do that in the attic because the temperatures that we hit up there are, the smoke detectors aren't listed to be in those temperatures. When it gets above 105 degrees, they shouldn't be in those temperatures.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. We'll look forward to hearing more from you.
Do you think you can give me that quote?
By the end of the week?
That's perfect. We meet again in two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three, oh, three weeks, right. Memorial Day, I forgot. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He needs some.
Oh, sorry.
One more?
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Thanks, Steve.
Historical society, David, do you have anything you want to say to us?
Oh, just kind of what I said in the letter.
Okay.
They give us some equipment.
Okay.
Or two places where we can put it, and all of that.
All right. So read, read the letter. Dear Selectmen, the Ashland Historical Society Board has another request for alterations to the Whipple House Museum. We'd like general permission to install electrical outlets as needed. Like many old houses, the Whipple House does not have as many outlets as a new house would have. This is particularly true of the upper story. When the house was first wired for electricity, the upper level was given one electric light in the center of the ceiling in each room and one outlet with just one plug. In the central hall to serve the entire second story, the Whipple Platt family did install outlets in the new bathroom, now a storage area, and the historical society put outlets in two display rooms. But four of the eight upstairs rooms still have no outlets. We did make use of an extension, of extension cords as needed, but the fire chief made it clear in his inspection report that extension cords can only be used for temporary needs. So we removed those extension cords that were on permanent duty. We have just been given a copier, which we would like to put in one of the upstairs rooms without an outlet, but we cannot do that legally. It is also likely that as we or our tenant, or the tenant acquire more electrical, electric-powered equipment, we will need more outlets in different parts of the building. So we would like general permission to install outlets as required rather than asking for the permission one outlet at a time. Yes?
I'd like to move that the Board of Selectmen give the Ashland Historical Society permission to install outlets as required in the Whipple House Museum.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Go ahead, David, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, select board items. Teja Singa, you have several items on the list that you'd like to discuss.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask the board what they think about having public comments at the end of the meeting as well as the beginning. There were, at the last meeting, there was a public comment, somebody that wanted to speak in the middle of the meeting. I think it would have been nice to have, give them an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Today, unfortunately, you know, we were conducting business, so we had to forego that. But I was thinking what we could do is kind of going along the lines of what we did previously, we'd have comments at the end, maintain the comments at the beginning as we have according to the agenda, eliminate it to, you know, a reasonable amount of time per person, and then have public comments at the end, general public comments, but again, a limitation on the time. What does?
You want to put that into a motion?
Sure, okay. I'll put that into a motion that, that at our meetings, at the Board of Selectmen meetings, in addition to the public comments at the beginning of the agenda, at the beginning of meetings, that we also have a section for general public comments at the end of the meeting and that a reasonable amount of time be given to, to people to speak on issues that are, you know, important to them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that discussion.
Discussion?
My question would be the secondary general comment area, would that be chained just to the agenda or would that be, as you said, open for things that they would like to speak of? That would be my only concern.
Right. So good question. My concern was that if somebody has something that they need to bring before us that is kind of abrupt or sudden, it might be helpful to have an opportunity for people to speak on that. However, perhaps we could go, you know, kind of partway and say that those in-public comments would be restricted to things that are brought up in, in the meeting. So it might include more than the agenda because, you know, something else might come up, but then they'd be able to speak on those.
Yes, Lee.
I have no problem with, with having the, some comments at the end, but I think it should pertain to our agenda and what we've been speaking about because you're going to get into the problem of complaints. And I don't think we're, we should be a platform for complaints at our meeting. This is our meeting, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, not the public's meeting.
And I would also like to say along those lines that we do have a process, in fact, I meant to bring this up earlier. We do have a process to get input from the public, especially concerns. As Lee said, we don't want, you know, to have complaints thrown at us at the meeting. Somebody has a legitimate concern, we have a form, it's on the first page of the website that they can fill out, you know, and put their name on it, and we will be happy to address it as a board. But I don't think we should be blindsided with these issues. Likewise, they can request an agenda item that, that we can approve. So I don't think it's necessary to wait until the 11th hour to get hit with something that we're not prepared to discuss. Yes?
Madam Chair, I'll amend my motion to be that the comments, that we adopt a public comment section at the end of the meeting in addition to the one at the beginning of the meeting, and that it be limited to items that have been discussed in the meeting.
Okay.
Discuss by the board?
Discuss by the board within the, within the meeting and kept to a reasonable amount of time.
Would this also be the three-minute times that we have at the beginning? Would that be uniform? That would be the best thing to do?
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably the best thing.
I would, I'm fine with that. I'm happy to amend my, my motion to.
You want to continue to second that amendment? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to have comments as well at the beginning, at the end of the meeting, limited to discussion of items discussed by the board during the meeting and limited to three minutes per person?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next.
Thank you. So this, we don't have to necessarily discuss these, they're items that I'm just offering for your consideration in light of the fact that we had a, we had a motion to address the handbook further, perhaps at a work session. So I just wanted to briefly introduce them to you for, you know, for your, for the sake of, you know, looking, familiarizing yourself. So I did some research on parliamentary procedures, that was something that came up. And so the first item is pretty much, you can take the time at your leisure to review that, first kind of packet on the democratic rules of order. And there's a website at the bottom of that page and you can receive more information there if you'd like. I was thinking perhaps when we get to that special work session, that we could consider those as a possible parliamentary procedure. And then I put some time, again, this is just for you to, you know, consider, I'm just offering it in anticipation of that work session. These are some proposed revisions to guidelines for ethical conduct that I have put together based on my own professional experiences and this education in the field of ethics.
Okay.
May I move on to the next item?
Please.
Okay. ATAC, I, so I'm not really certain, I need the, I need the board's guidance on how to proceed here. There have been several things that have kind of come up that have made it difficult to have, to call a meeting. One is that I've been informed that, oh, well, I'm anticipating Mr. Toth's resignation from ATAC, so I'd like to know how, how would we replace that person? And I've also been informed by the chair that she's not on ATAC, although on the website here.
I know. I don't know why it's listed that because I've never been on the ATAC. It's a, it's a mistake and we need to get that fixed.
Okay. The planning board has also, I've been informed that they will be discussing appointing a new liaison to ATAC. So things are kind of up in the air.
I think at this point, I would recommend we leave it to Charlie to organize. No, seriously.
You want me to organize ATAC?
There's nothing, there's nothing more to do at this point until we have more members on the board.
On a meeting.
Yeah, organize a meeting when we have a list. Who did you contact?
Okay, so I have attempted, or I did contact by email, Mr. Durak, but that was about trying to schedule, so I haven't given an open-ended question. I rather gave him.
Yeah, it was my understanding that he has resigned from that as well, but I don't know that for a fact.
I contacted Mr. Badger. He expressed that he was pretty flexible.
And actually, he came to the meeting. He was the only one here.
Who came to?
He came, there was a meeting that you had set up and he came and was the only one here.
Proposed meeting dates, yeah, that wasn't confirmed, but I do apologize to Mr. Badger for that, for the miscommunication there. And Mr. Paquette, he has indicated that meeting in the evenings is not.
It's difficult, yes.
It's difficult for him, you know, that's after hours, so that's understandable. Again, we're waiting for planning board to.
Well, there was also Carol Fugel, who was a member.
She was the liaison from the planning board, which is what I have here. I have contacted the chair of the planning board and she has indicated to me that they will be or have perhaps already had a conversation about appointing a new representative, but I haven't yet been informed.
No, they haven't. I was at the last meeting and there was no discussion.
So that, I'm awaiting more information on that.
Well, until we have more, there's nothing we can really do at this point, but when we do, I would give the list to Charlie and have him set up a meeting. It might be easier.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
And Martinine will update the website.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
I did just want to clarify something that we spoke about last week. I asked a question about 4013 regarding working with the default budget for having a special town meeting for the purpose of a revised operating budget.
Yeah.
So my understanding is that that special town meeting could be had to have, to increase the budget in case we needed more money. I'd like for us to also consider the possibility of having a meeting to reduce the budget.
No. Oh, sorry. I don't think that we are in a position to reduce the budget at this point. We're, we're operating on a shoestring. How can we reduce the budget? It was voted on by the people. We always, let me just say, we always monitor our budget and we have come in under budget every year that I've been involved. And that's what we work toward, not giving ourselves some sort of an artificial barrier saying we can't exceed it. We've all, I've seen it in the past when I wasn't on the board, when we got really close, we put on spending freezes. I mean, everything is possible. We have to manage to that budget or below it, but I think it's just a mistake to set some artificial number that, you know, we have to comply with.
We spent the whole year working on that budget.
I know, exactly.
A whole year. Almost.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I hear you, we will obviously want to keep our numbers low, but we, that's what we do. We don't, try not to spend money that we don't need to spend.
And money that's not spent goes back to taxpayers.
Goes back to, yes, to the general fund. And that helps our unassigned fund balance, which gives us an opportunity to reduce taxes. So there's every reason and every motivation to keep our budget low, not to just spend willy-nilly. So that's my thought.
To touch base on the tax reduction, reducing the taxes in town for people, last Thursday, there was an article in the Record Enterprise, the school board has expended 95.4% of their budget through here. Are you going to bring more money, are you pointing that they're going to be doing this roof above us or are they going to be sending more money back to reduce taxes? So perhaps we should get a hold of, or outreach Assistant Superintendent Camarino to see in which way that they're going to be moving forward on that.
Yep. There's all kinds of unknowns.
Yep, there is.
Well, thank you for hearing my point.
Anything else? Yes, Lee?
I just, I just like to tell Teja Singa that if you have, you know, if you want more information on something or anything, that there's nothing that says that you can't go directly to a department head and discuss subjects as long as you're not making any, you know, business decisions on your own. But that's what, that's what I would advise. I'd go directly to the department head and talk about issues.
Thank you for that recommendation.
I have a couple of things. One had to do with the agenda attachments. I understand that there was like 90 pages that came out and I think that's overkill. In fact, 15 of them were blank. I'm not sure that we need to include all of the excruciating details for the public unless they request information after the fact. I think it's, it's a waste of time and money at this point. We should have it, but I don't think it should go to the, to the public.
Teja Singa asked that I put those.
I understand that, but I, I think we've got to be real careful about what we put in. You know, as I said, anybody can request any kind of information, but, but I, we certainly shouldn't be sending out blank pages. So I just think we need to be a little bit more judicious about what we put in the public package. Yes?
The blank, I can speak to the blank pages? That is the way it's scanned.
I understand.
Some of these are front and back.
I understand.
So in order to save paper.
No, I understand that. Yes?
Madam Chair, I just want to make it clear that when I mentioned it, I did mention it as something that we should speak to the select board about.
Okay, okay.
My thought is that it would be adding to transparency, would give the, the public an opportunity to look through and understand the things that we are reviewing.
I understand and I'm all in favor of transparency, but I think we need, again, we need to be a little bit more judicious about all of this extra time and paperwork that we're doing. As I said, anybody can get anything that we've discussed, but, you know, do they need to get all of this stuff?
It's employee hours.[1703.49]
It's employee hours. Absolutely not. I mean, you know, this was the specs that we should consider. That's just my thought. We have one other Select Board item, and that is, we received a letter, what did I do with it? That I will read to the Board of Selectmen from the Water and Sewer Commission, subject liaison to the Water and Sewer Commission. We'd like to remind the Selectmen that there is no official liaison position from the Board of Selectmen to the Water and Sewer Commission required by RSA. An informal relationship between department and the Board of Selectmen has developed over the past few years to coordinate projects and discuss issues of mutual interest. However, the fact that Selectmen Civilingham has made accusations of a conflict of interest at a public meeting and has made his collegial relationship difficult, if not impossible, to maintain. He implied that the chairman of this department influenced the chair of the Board of Selectmen in favor of a site access agreement, which is not true. For this reason, we believe the Selectmen's Civilingham is biased against the department and cannot fairly communicate matters of mutual interest. We respectfully request that the Selectmen appoint a new liaison to the Water and Sewer Department, and at this point, I will recuse myself from any further discussion.
So would that mean the vice chair come, take over?
Yes.
Wasn't this discussed at, I understand this was discussed with Walter?
Yes, it was.
And he said that we should leave things as they were until?
Tread lightly is what we were told, yes.
Okay.
Yes. That any, any fast motions would, would lead to the belief that another commission, board, or entity was subjecting us to their thought process and making us alter our way of daily operations. It's pretty much the gist of what we received, so.
Okay, so he's, so he's saying?
Don't be quick to move on it.